June meeting of the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals. It'll take me a few minutes to get used to saying that that way instead of the way we used to say it, Board of Zoning Appeals. But we're a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the Chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the City Administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions from the Board that they may have, the Chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the Chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. The speaker should identify themselves with their name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the Chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the Chairman to speak at any one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the Chairman will close the public hearing. Once a public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table action on the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. Before we launch into the formal agenda for the meeting, I'll introduce some members who are here tonight. Normally, Mr. Clark on my far left, on your right, he is not here this evening. Next to where he would be sitting is Mr. Bartnik, Michael Bartnik. Next to Michael is Thomas Strat, who is not only a member of the Board, but also our liaison with the Planning Commission. Myself, Dave Lambert, I'm the Chairman. Next to me is Alan Neal, our Vice Chairman. Next to Alan is Bill Fisher. And then finally, the last member of the Board is Ken Courtney from City Staff. We have Paul Evans, who's the Zoning and Compliance Specialist. And tonight, representing the City Attorney's Office, is Alan Motzny, the Assistant City Attorney. With that, I would have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Strat?
Here.
Thank you for calling the roll. And we have the approval of the minutes for the May 17 study session and regular meetings. And I believe before we entertain a motion, and I know Mr. Bartnik had indicated with an email that, well, did you want to make a motion, Mr. Courtney, or?
Yes, including some amendments.
Whatever his amendments are.
Well, not just those. I want no resolutions shown in the section under election of officers. Just the announcement of the nominations and the announcement of why the one nomination was being rejected.
Okay, so you're moving the amendments with, the minutes with those amendments in?
Yes.
All right. Any other corrections to the minutes? Mr. Bartnik, did you have any others in addition to Mr. Courtney's?
I think that includes Mr. Bartnik.
I think all of his?
I'm not certain I understand what the proposed amendment or correction was.
Okay, the elimination of all resolutions. That is, the resolution that wasn't made. The first one, which was making Mr. Lambert Chair. The second resolution, which is the division of the question. I think it's easier that those two be completely obliterated since we later changed the system we were voting on and did it under a normal nomination system. There were no resolutions nominating. People were just nominated. And it was not the people that, they were nominated by two different, two different people, but not in one resolution. So all of those resolutions nominating would be out of there, just the nominations occurred for those two, for two people, for Chairman and for two people for Vice Chairman. And then the addition of the reason that Mr. Bartnik rejected Ronnie, or withdrew his name from nomination.
Is that acceptable to you, or?
No, that's not. So I would not, I would not be seconding that proposal. I don't know how you can take out something that actually happened, but.
Well, if you, there were no resolutions of nomination. You do agree with that, don't you?
There was a motion, 6A, there was a motion to elect Mr. Lambert for Chair and Mr. Bartnik for Vice Chair.
Correct.
Then after that, there was a motion for division of the question for the election of officers.
Correct.
So are you saying to take out those two motions?
Yes, since it's easier to explain why we went and did what we did. If you don't take those two out, then you have to add the reason that we changed how we were voting.
I think we need to add the reason why, then I, I don't see how you can take out two motions that were made. I don't see how you can just take out those motions.
Let me ask the, yeah.
I think it's just as easy to take them out as it is to explain why you didn't follow through with them.
I've only been on the Board for two or three or four years, not as long as you have. I don't understand how, I've never seen a motion removed from a minutes.
I've never seen the case where we have jumped from the motion that was made and then went off in a different direction either.
That was a unique collection last month.
That's what I say.
So it needs to be reflected.
Let me ask Mr. Motzny, is it permissible for us to go in the route that Mr. Courtney is suggesting?
The Open Meetings Act actually has very little requirements for minutes. In anticipating that there might be an issue on the minutes, I copied the provision. The minutes, by law, only have to show the date, time, place, members present, members absent, any decisions made at a meeting, and the purpose for going to closed session, if you go into closed session. The minutes shall also include all roll call votes taken at the meeting. Those are the only legal requirements. Absent that, as long as you meet those requirements, whatever this Board unanimously approves as the amendments, are the minutes. I don't know if that helps you any, but what Mr. Courtney's suggesting would be, would be legal.
Mr. Neal? Okay, if, if you don't wish to do that, then we must add some explanation of why we changed from going with one system to another. And as we divided a question, we never voted on either part of the division of the question. We went to a completely different system. But then there were no resolutions of nomination, which are mentioned multi-times.
Let me recognize Mr. Neal, and then we can, that's right, the resolution.
One commoner question, just to, and it's really common to consistency, but it starts first with this question, is, isn't it from last meeting forward that these minute, the meetings are now preserved via a tape? Okay, then my point would be is that the minutes, the written minutes, whatever we submit, should reflect as well as they can, I know they're abbreviated now, what occurs on digital images or, you know, the actual taped version, lack of a better term for the technology. If we, since those items are on the tape, it seems wrong not to reflect it in some manner in the written minutes. So I guess my, my comment is, is I'm, I'm comfortable leaving it just the way it is. Now maybe, you know, and that, that's just my comment, so.
Okay, I don't, you can't leave it the way it is because that is not what happened. Then, then what I would do is, the corrections then should be that the first motion is a motion to elect a Chairman and a Vice Chairman. It was two people. The second motion is a motion to divide, which is correct in there. Then there should be some explanation as to why we then moved from not voting on the divided question. It was then ruled that we should go back and have a standard nominating and election of each office individually. Then there were no resolutions nominating. There were two nominations made, there should be a comment that they were nominated, two people were nominated. Then you should have the vote on it, just as we have. Exclude the next nomination resolution, which did not occur. The second vote. Exclude the next nomination resolution, which did not occur. Have the third vote. At the ending, I still think, even though we didn't do it, we announced that somebody was elected, I personally feel that we should have a resolution due in the actual election, but that did not occur, so should not be in there. But the, then we go to the Chair, Vice Chairman, and it should be mentioned that there were two nominations and that one withdrew his name from nomination. But there is no resolution of nomination. And then the vote, and then the, then the announcement of who the winner is.
I have a suggestion, unless somebody has another idea, that maybe what we do is, we defer action on the minutes tonight and have Mr. Evans go back, look at the tape, record the relevant statements and motions made, and bring them back to the next meeting. If members have input they'd like to give Mr. Evans between now and the July meeting that would help him assemble that information, then we could take it up at the July meeting. Is that something people would be open to doing?
I would second that.
Sounds good. All right. Well, I guess I made the motion, and Mr. Bartnik seconded it, that we postpone action on the minutes until our next meeting. All right, and any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we have postponed action on the minutes until the next meeting. As I suggested, it sounds like both Mr. Bartnik and Mr. Courtney have some suggested language that they would include in the minutes to make sure you get with Mr. Evans between now and then.
Yeah, I think, I think we have the same thing now.
Probably.
Pretty close.
Okay.
I'd just like to see what, I can't visualize what you're, what you're saying on the record here, but yeah, I'd like to look at it.
Okay. And I should mention also, we'll give some sympathy to Mr. Evans tonight because he's not only doing his normal job, he's also recording the minutes for the meeting as well, so. Next on the agenda is a postpone item, which is a variance request from Minalgata and Ashish Manik at 4820 Livernoy. And I believe they've also requested another postponement till our next meeting.
That is correct. They've requested a postponement till the July 19, 2011 regularly scheduled Zoning Board of Appeals, so anyone who is here for that, they have requested a postponement.
Was there anyone here who was on that, here for that item tonight? Okay. Member of the Board would like to make a motion to postpone action on this until the July meeting? Mr. Courtney's moved. Is there a second? Mr. Fisher seconds it. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Roll call, please.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
I abstain.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes. That item is postponed till our July meeting. Next hearing of cases, we have a variance request from Tom Kazupski, the Executive Director of the North Woodward Community Foundation, for a location at 3668 Livernoy. Mr. Evans, could you present the information, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I might interject before we start this item?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
With your permission, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I would like the Board and the City Attorney to discuss whether I have a conflict of interest on this particular matter with pertaining to the Woodward, North Woodward Community Foundation. As an estate planning attorney, I have consulted with Mr. Kazupski, Kazupski and the Foundation in the past several months on various charitable planning, giving opportunities for my clients. To my knowledge, that does not create any financial or pecuniary interest or tie to the Foundation. Rather, I am or would be paid by my clients in connection with the work that I perform by my clients. But I would like to bring that to the attention of the Board and let the Board discuss it.
Mr. Bartnik, you don't believe you have a conflict of interest?
That is correct.
Okay, any, I would assume the only reason for a motion would be is if a member of the Board felt that he should be excused, would that be correct?
If somebody felt that, that there was a, a conflict of interest, they could make a motion, but otherwise we could pursue.
Seeing no one is offering a motion to excuse him, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject matter of our first case tonight is commonly known as Zion Christian Church on the overhead. The property is located south of East Waddles and east of Livernoy. There's a close-up view of the property in question. And the zoning of the property and most of the surrounding property is single-family residential. The property to the North Walsh College is a zone community facility. The nature of this request involves a proposed Troy Family Days Festival, an outdoor carnival festival scheduled for a four-day duration in September of this year. Now, the zoning ordinance allows outdoor festivals such as this at the church, but there are some limitations to the hours of operation and also the duration of the event. The ordinance says that the hours of operation for the carnival festival are to end at 9:00 PM on Thursdays and Sundays, excuse me, 8:00 PM on Thursdays and Sundays, and 10:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. The applicant is proposing to end their events on those days one hour later. So on Thursday and Sunday, they want to end at 9:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday at 11:00 PM. Now, another part of the zoning ordinance says that the maximum duration for this event will be four consecutive days. They do propose to hold the carnival for four consecutive days, but there are also two days on either side of the event for setup and takedown. And that is also regulated by the zoning ordinance and falls within the four consecutive day provision. So they need a variance to allow those two extra, excuse me, those four extra days to conduct the setup and takedown for the event. So those are the two variances they're requesting here tonight.
Any questions from members of the Board? Mr. Courtney?
Is this type of event permitted in a district like Oakland, where Oakland Mall is?
Yes, it's permitted in other districts.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, when you said church, I thought maybe it wasn't.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the City Staff and Board members? Seeing none, Mr. Kazupski or anyone else from the group that would like to make a
Chairman Lambert, members of the Board.
I should remind also, I may not have mentioned, make sure you sign in on the little clipboard.
Oh, okay. I have with me tonight, from people that are involved with the festival itself. First of all, the representing the property owner is Dick Ramsdale. And our festival chairperson is Al Lindsay. Our operations chairperson is Jeff Wonyarsky. And Cheryl Witten here has been doing a lot of work with Mr. Evans and will be speaking for the festival. She is, she's done the plans for it and has studied all of the zoning ordinance and everything else, so we thought that we would have her address the Board and, and fill you in.
Thank you.
Good evening. This request is somewhat different from requests that usually come before you. According to your variance review standards, it indicates that all the conditions need to exist to grant a variance. Conditions A through D deal with dimensional issues pertaining to the site. Section 713I, three and four of your new zoning ordinance does not deal with dimensional requirements, but timing issues. Condition E is the only review standard that we can address for a timing requirement. In planning the Troy Days, or the Troy Family Days Festival, the major emphasis of the committee was to diminish the impact on the community and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the fairgoers and the public. We were very careful in considering a site for the Troy Family Days so that would, we would minimize the impact on the inhabitants of the city. Few sites in the city are large enough to hold an event of this type. And since public parks were no longer available to us, church sites were one of the few sites within the city large enough to have the acreage to handle this event and provide onsite parking. And church sites are also underutilized for the majority of the week, thus allowing this type of activity to take place. When we were told that park sites were no longer available, the memo we got from the city suggested to us that we investigate church sites. As a committee, we made the decision not to charge for parking. And by doing this, it reduced the amount of time for vehicles to enter the site. And we also have plans for a contract in place with a professional parking firm to handle the parking lot, so also to eliminate any congestion on the public streets. We have planned the entrances and exits to the site with right turns only, again reducing the impact on the public streets and any endangerment to the public at large. Walsh College and St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church have granted us permission to utilize their parking lots for overflow parking for the peak times of the festival when the Zion Christian Church site is not adequate to handle. We have also arranged for shuttle service from Walsh College and St. Nick's, and the shuttle service is free of charge. We did this because we wanted to have people park at Zion, at Walsh, and at St. Nick's, and not utilizing the neighborhood streets to park in. When we were involved in the festival in the past, people parked in the neighborhoods because, one, they were trying to avoid a parking fee, and it was more convenient. We have also put security in place by a professional security team to protect the public safety while attending this event. We are planning on having a, an event that is clean, fun event for the entire family. The reason we are requesting a duration of eight days instead of four is for a community festival, we do not want to rush through the setup or teardown process. The amusement company requires three days for setup and one day for teardown. And without adequate time, especially for setup, the safety of the public could be jeopardized, and we're not willing to do that. erection of amusement rides, tents, fencing, placement of trailers in the stage, all take time. And once the major components are in place, then we need adequate time to connect the electrical. And then finally, all the finishing touches that need to be in place to provide a first-class event for the public. The other thing we will need is inspections, so we will have to have additional time for Oakland County Health to come out, the Fire Department, and the electrical inspections that will need to be in place and handled before we can open this event to the public. Before this latest ordinance was enacted, there was no restriction on the number of days for an outdoor special event. And I believe the intent of this ordinance was to prevent outdoor special events for occurring weeks at a time. The maximum limit of four days, we feel, is over-restrictive for this type of event, and the new language would actually preclude a community festival from occurring in Troy unless a variance is granted. Concerning the relief from Section 713I-3, the hours of operation. With selecting a church site for this event, unfortunately, that put us in the zoning classification of residential, which is more restricted than any other hours of operations for the other zoning classifications. And we would like to have these hours as these have been typical hours for past community festivals held within this city. And I believe the intent of the ordinance was to protect homes within residential neighborhoods where they are in close proximity to each other. We have a considerable distance from the facility site and the adjoining neighborhoods. The impact on one additional hour to each evening, I don't believe would be excessive. And we actually chose Zion Christian Church because of the, we felt this site, out of all the sites we investigated, had the least amount of impact upon the neighborhood. Past surveys conducted by the city indicate that families and teens are looking for activities within the city. Latest surveys indicated that they do not want tax dollars to support such activities. The North Woodward Community Foundation, along with the use of the grounds of Zion Christian Church and the volunteers from the community, would like to hold a community festival to replace the one that was discontinued by the city. This has been an annual event that has always expressed how vibrant this city can be. We are returning to a new era of an old tradition, Troy Family Days Festival that is run all by volunteers from the community. Please allow these volunteers to run the event as they had in the past and how it was run under the city. Help us make this event successful by granting these variances.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Courtney?
Just one question on the, when you were looking at sites, did you consider things like Oakland Mall?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
But we felt Oakland Mall, depending on what's happening at the mall, you can't control the amount of parking they need on any one day. And also, the, we felt as a security issue, that site would not be as safe as having it elsewhere in the city.
And the other question is on timing.
Yes.
Sunday morning, you're going to have a problem with people coming and going to church at the same time they're coming and going to the Troy Days Festival, or are they going to cancel church that Sunday?
What we are doing is, the major part of the festival is not going to be open on Sunday until 1:00. The only thing we're holding on Sunday morning is the pancake breakfast. And we figure it'll be mostly the church people who are there for the pancake breakfast with some people from the community.
Mr. Strat?
Yeah, it sounds like to me you have two variances you're asking for. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the one variance, of course, is your time. You need that extension of time in order to operate. What is your difficulty? Would it be very, very difficult for you to operate if you did not get the variance of timing now?
Of timing? The one day that would definitely be a problem is we, if we find a sponsor for fireworks, our first day for fireworks would be Saturday with a rain date for Sunday. At that time-
What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get a variance for you, and I'm trying to find out how we can justify it. Your operation would be really difficult to operate if you did not have that additional hours. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. And secondly, in order to have a successful event, it would be extremely difficult for you to even consider not having more than, or less than, four days. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I need to hear to find out if you have a variance or not, or, we have to justify a variance some way.
Right.
So that is what you're asking for?
Well, also-
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
There's no possible way to set up this event, hold it.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
All right, now we can go from there. We don't need to know about any of the other conditions or any other items. Those are the two issues that really you're asking.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Neal, did you have a question or a comment?
More a question for either the board or staff, if they can recall this. In consideration of earlier festivals or events similar to this that we've had in the city, what comes to my mind is that the city operated Troy Days. I think it was Arnold Amusements who had always handled that. Do you recall at all how many days of prep? It seemed that they had multiple days of prep before it opened and closed. I never paid that close attention, but-
I can actually answer that for you since-
That would be great if you-
I was involved in the festival for many years. Jim Sierlowski here was involved for 25 years. Arnold Amusement starts setting up on Monday morning, and they're ready for the rides to be open to the public by Thursday. They start tearing down immediately after we close on Sunday, and they are out of the site by late afternoon on Monday.
So what you're saying is they, as a professional carnival operator, needed the same level of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Arnold Amusement is going to be our ride vendor again this year.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I may have missed that. Thank you.
That's okay.
Any more questions for Ms. Witten?
So-
Yes, Mr. Stratt?
What you're saying is, it would be impossible for you to operate getting the inspection set up and teardown in four days. Is that correct?
Impossible.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Seeing no more questions, you can have a seat, and then we'll open up the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to address the board on this issue to come forth. And just as a reminder, make sure when you come up to speak to the board to sign in on the sheet there with your name and address. Anyone like to come up and speak to the board? None? Okay. You sure now? I'll give you a last chance if anybody wants to speak to the board. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then if no one wishes to address the board on this issue. And we'll bring this back to the board for any further questions or action on the resolution for the variance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance. I would incorporate the relevant sections of the, sections of the ordinance, 7.134 and 7.133, that the, that there were the hard, requisite hardship has been shown, and that the impact on the neighboring properties and neighbors is not that significant in terms of the additional days of setting up, Monday, September 12 through Wednesday, September 14th, and the additional day of teardown of Monday, September 19th. And similarly, with regard to the addition of one hour of operation on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And that's been seconded by Mr. Stratt. I should indicate before the board discusses this or makes a, goes to a vote that we have two communications. We have one from a neighbor across the street who are opposed to the variance, and I think all the board members received that in the email this past week. And then the second one is from Walsh College, which is in support of the variance. Any discussion on the motion for the variance? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney? Yes. Motion passes. You have your variance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Courtney?
As, as just one person, though, for, for next year, I'd like to see a little more consideration given to something like Oakland Mall or that type of area.
Actually, we looked at-
Come up to the microphone, please.
We looked at, when we looked at Oakland Mall, having been on council myself, I know some of the problems that the city would put up with. And Cheryl mentioned the security, but we also wanted to keep this a community festival for our community. This is what it's meant to bring our community together with the volunteers, and by putting it on I-75, we were afraid that we would have a problem, so that's why we didn't do it there. And we knew that at the church, we wouldn't have that problem because they're thinking of it exactly as we are. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kazupi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a, actually, our last item of variance requests, is a variance request from Richard Adams at 926 Norwich Drive. Mr. Evans, could you present this to the board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property at 926 Norwich Drive is in a residential neighborhood south of Big Beaver Road and east of Adams Road. Specifically, it's at the corner of-
Witherby.
Witherby and Norwich. It's outlined-
Point of order, we need to open up the door to the meeting. Really.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And in the overhead here, the property is outlined in red. The existing, excuse me, the subject property is owned, single-family residential, as is all properties in the surrounding neighborhood. The nature of this request involves the proposed addition of a carport towards the Norwich side of the residence. Now, right now, they've got a driveway that extends northward from the existing carport to the side street on Witherby, and they want to change that configuration by removing that driveway and installing a new driveway along Norwich Drive. And as part of that project, in this drawing here, Norwich is to the left, they want to install a new driveway and add on this structure here to the existing carport. This is their front yard, this area here between the sidewalk going easterly towards the house. And the zoning ordinance requires that the house or any portion attached to it be set back from the front property line 25 feet. With a proposed addition, the setback, when finished, will be 22 feet 10 inches, so they need just under a 2.5-foot variance in order to make this project work. The applicant has provided the board some photos of the existing site and a little rendering here of what the structure addition will look like and how it will fit in with the existing house. So if they're successful tonight, this is what they'll be able to build.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Evans? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Evans to show us the drawing again, the schematic drawing of the, yeah, that one. Do you happen to know where is the large tree that's between the city, on the city strip of land relative to the driveway? Will they have to, are they asking to remove the tree, or will it be next to the tree?
I don't know, and maybe the applicant could shed some light on that.
Thank you.
Any more questions for city staff? Seeing none, Mr. Adams, could you come up and make sure you sign in and present your information to the board? Thank you.
Good evening. Gentlemen, you've seen my schematic and my drawings that I've presented to you. We have thought about this for, since we bought the home, because of the inconvenience of having that driveway off Witherby, consistently, people drive past our home looking for it, not knowing that 926 Norwich is on that corner because there's no apparent drive to it. So by changing the configuration of the driveway, I propose on putting in a new approach, a car pad on the south side of the building and a carport into the east, west face of the garage or carport area. And that means a seven-foot addition is required in order to get a permissible 22-foot to put the car into it. So I'm going to do some demolition, so I have that carport directly in. I don't know what else, how else to explain it, gentlemen.
You answered Mr. Bartnik's question about the tree.
The tree is approximately 15 feet to the north of the proposed apron.
Any more questions? Mr. Courtney?
Isn't this a bit larger than the one that you were objecting to down the street from you?
No, sir, it is not.
In fact, if I recall right, at that time, you kind of implied that I was voting for a friend.
No, sir, I did not imply that. This is not impeding-
I seem to have a very good recollection of that.
You'll have to revert back to the actual minutes, sir. My wife was opposing to that. I did not state any argument for or against that. The proposed objection I had on that piece of property was that it was, already had a variance of less than 15 feet between the houses. His proposed expansion took another foot off that variance, so it was actually a double variance, and that's what I opposed to. Now, my proposed variance does not affect anybody else's property. It is within my property line, as I've shown on the south side. And the car pad that I propose on the south side of the carport is within, well, the variance is within three feet plus to the property line itself. So it has been well-planned not to affect anybody else's property.
Any more questions for Mr. Adams? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
So your variance is created by what, by the fact that the site is not conducive to you accomplishing your, your goal, and your goal is to actually provide additional parking space?
My goal is to actually present a more aesthetically-looking home, to provide recognition of where my house is via the address. And in order to accomplish that, I need to have a deeper carport opening up to the west in order to put a car into it, and that is why I need the variance.
Okay, you're going to have to tear down some of the columns that you've got there right now, and you're going to have to reinforce that in order to accomplish that, correct? You're well aware of that.
The current structure will have to be reinforced, yes.
Okay.
I have talked to the building department about the requirements.
So you're adding to the front, and you've got an eight-foot side yard, is that correct? Eight-foot that you're actually providing for parking?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be a pad.
For another for parking, right?
Correct.
And you could not accomplish that if, in fact, you remain the way that you currently have it?
No, sir, could not.
So your variance is based on what you wanted to accomplish in terms of the expansion of your parking facility for your cars?
Yes, sir. That would take my car off the street and put my another car into the carport.
That's what I wanted to find out. That's your variance that you're asking for?
Yes.
That's your, your, the variance that you're asking for is, in order to accomplish your task and goals, is you have to have that variance in order to have that additional car parked there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions for Mr. Adams? Thank you. You can have a seat. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone else who would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing no other speakers, we'll close the public hearing. And I would indicate, we only have one communication from a neighbor who is, they haven't really addressed pro or con, they just raised an issue related to a prior request of the board in the same neighborhood. With that, I would bring it back to the board for either further questions of staff or for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Stratt?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance request. It is not contrary to public interest and does not permit the establishment or, of the prohibit use of the zoning district and does not cause adverse effect to the property in immediate vicinity of the zoning district.
Mr. Courtney seconded? Motion's made and seconded to approve the variance. Any discussion from the board members? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
The motion passes. You have your variance.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes all of the hearings for tonight. We're on to item number five on the agenda, which is communications. The only thing we have, I believe, is, Mr. Evans, or somebody in your staff, it may have been Kathy, you sent us an email about a stormwater presentation coming up soon. Either you could tell us about that, or maybe Mr. Stratt, it sounds like something's coming to the planning commission, maybe?
Well, what I can tell you is the email that's within the communications section of the agenda here. Oh, there's a planning commission special study meeting on June 28, 2011, and that's right here in council chambers. And there'll be a presentation entitled Stormwater 101 by Kelly Sanzika, who is the director of the Wayne County Department of Environment. Basically, it's going to be an opportunity to learn about innovative stormwater programs and techniques that are being used in Wayne County. So everyone's invited to that, including those members of the public who may be watching on TV.
Great, thank you. I believe there are no other communications other than the latest American Planning Association newsletter that's been placed in front of all the board members. With that, we will move on to public comment. Doesn't look like there's anyone left from the public here to comment, so I guess we're concluding that part of the agenda. Next is miscellaneous business, discussion on the revised rules of procedure, and I guess we throw it back to either Mr. Evans or Mr. Motzky, one of you.
Well, I guess I can start, and what we've done is basically provided the board members a copy of the existing rules of procedure, and due to some changes in the zoning ordinance, there definitely some of those rules of procedure do not apply, the most obvious thing being renewals for variances because the ordinance doesn't allow it in that manner anymore. So what we agreed to do last meeting is I would send out a copy of the rules of procedure, and the board members were invited to, and staff, legal staff, and also myself, were invited to comment on those rules of procedure. We received some comments, and I put a few in there that I thought might be a good idea. And you received your draft with the agenda packet and also some comments from a couple of our board members. And essentially, I would propose that we discuss them, and if we can come to some sort of agreement tonight on what we want to have and what we don't want to have, I can take those, put those into the final draft and present it next month for action.
Is the one that came out in our, that we received electronically different than the one that was placed in front of us in paper form tonight, or is it the same?
It should be the same one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
How would you like to go through this?
Oh, no, no. Let me, let me back up, yeah. The one entitled Agenda Item Number Seven, that was paper copy?
Uh huh.
That's the one you're referring to that's placed in front of you tonight? That is actually from one of our board members. Dave, that's from you. And then I believe you received some comments, also from Mr. Bartnik. And the one in the agenda packet is the version that I sent out in regards to the first round of comments and some thoughts I had and thoughts, some thoughts the legal department had on what we might want to do relative to, A, some procedural issues, but B, also what would be required due to the changing of the language in the zoning ordinance.
Well, how would you like us to perceive it? Go ahead, Mr. Bartnik.
Mr. Chairman, I'm confused. I received with the packet, this, I've only gotten comments, my own comments were what I received. And then, so this, this item here, Agenda Seven, is another version of the proposed minutes, which I frankly haven't had a chance to look at this, the paper version that we got today.
Yeah, and-
Also, if there were member, comments from other members, I never received those.
The, and just to give you an idea of the order that things went in, I'd sent the existing rules of procedure out, asked that an initial round of comments be received by a certain date, and Dave sent me this Redline draft here entitled Agenda Item Number Seven. And so I incorporated those as best I, at least I thought I incorporated them all, Dave, into the one that's in your digital electronic packet, along with other changes as discussed by the legal department. So essentially, the order went like this. We received Dave's Redline version, that was the only one we received. I put his changes and some other changes into the electronic copy, sent that one out with the agenda, and then you responded with your comments to the one in the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. And those are the comments, that's the order of comments and all- And those are the comments, that's the order of comments and all the comments we've received to date.
Any of the members of the board, or Mr. Evans, or Mr. Motzni, have a suggestion on how you want to proceed on this? Would you like to be able to have a month to discuss, think about it, or would you like to go through article by article right now and discuss any questions on this? Mr. Bartnik?
Yeah, I'd like to have some time to digest what was proposed here, and I don't know that everyone's had a chance to look at my comments, and if anybody else has comments. You know, I would like to have some time to digest it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is made to postpone discussion on this until our July meeting? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Stratt. Any discussion on the motion postpone? I think the last roll call for the evening, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Motion is passed. We will discuss this at our July meeting, and I believe that is the last item of business. Any further items to come before the board? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Motzni?
I just want to mention, there's a hearing tomorrow on a case of interest to this board, in that it involves this board. Back in February, you approved a variance allowing an expansion of a non-conforming structure and three setback variances for a dental office. And the adjacent doctor's office challenged that decision in circuit court, and the hearing on that case is tomorrow morning, so hopefully by next meeting, we'll know the result.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
That was also approved by this planning commission, right? The site plan was approved by the planning commission?
Right, but all that's being challenged is this, is this board's decision granting the variance.
Wow.
Will you be representing the city, or?
I will.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Any further business? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
I just wanted to maybe report on what is happening at the planning commission level. We just received a rough draft on all of the incentives that we want to create for passive and active design that relates to energy conservation. And so we're going through that process, but again, though, this bioswells in the area of water management, stormwater management, is also an interesting thing that I would encourage everyone, if they could, attend to. I think it's really going to be great, and it's going to link in with the other items that we're talking about in terms of energy conservation, which is going to be, actually, my understanding is, there's going to be a committee that's going to, or a group, or I don't know what they're going to call it, that is actually going to review the proposal prior to it going to the planning commission, and give whatever incentives and credits that will be actually incorporated. It's not finalized, but that's the intent of the concept of what is going to happen, which is going to be interesting. Again, I think we're way ahead of a lot of other communities in a lot of ways, I think, including our new zoning ordinance, and I think this is also an additional thing. There's a lot of passive design elements that could be actually incorporated, which I haven't had a chance to review it with Brent and Zach, but that really is creative in nature and does not cost the client any additional money. It's just how creative you can be without adding cost to it. Solar collectors cost money. I mean, that's a return for the investment. But hopefully, we're looking at other kinds of things that are not necessarily cost to the additional cost to developers, or whoever they may be. I just thought I'd give a report.
Any further business? Seeing none, we are adjourned until July.